Where is the mayor? Mayor Webb?
He's got the mayor out there.
I have a motion to reconvene.
So moved?
To open up to public discussion. Do you want the public to discuss any things from the neighborhood?
If you're waiting to talk on a specific issue, we're going to open up, I think, discussion on ethno-genetic plants and the event license when they come up. So if anybody has anything else they want to talk about that's not that.
City business? Open up special presentation for the ethno-genetic plants, item one. Anyone have any comments up here?
I move adoption of the resolution supporting entheogenic plant practices and declaring that the investigation and arrest of adult individuals involved with the use of entheogenic plants be the lowest priority of the city of Hazel Park. Your honor, if I may. Seems like just yesterday across the state, we were discussing whether or not marijuana and THC had legitimate medicinal and therapeutic effects. And now any discussion of the contrary is laughable and applies in the face of mountains of academic research. So here we are a few years later with entheogenic plants. So while the substances may be different, the underlying conclusion is the same. As the resolution states, entheogenic plants improve mental health and well-being and connect people with nature and whatever deity they worship. This isn't speculative. This is the truth with a whole body of research to back it up. I initially wanted this resolution to be a ballot proposal because I thought the community was a bit more divided and I didn't want my personal inclinations and beliefs to overshadow my responsibility to my constituents. Turns out I was wrong. The community is not divided at all. I have a long history and body of experience with entheogenic plants. As someone who suffers from depression and acute anxiety, it can tell you that there isn't a single treatment that has done more for me than a well-timed consumption of psilocybin. It allows me to check in with myself without the presence of anxiety or ego and take an honest accounting of my well-being. It also provides me with a clear path forward to make any necessary self-improvements. It makes me a better son, friend, husband, and legislator. I'd like to thank my friends at Decriminalize Michigan and Decriminalize Hazel Park for their relentless advocacy for this issue, especially Shan Vicious and Julie Baron, who is a registered psychotherapist with more than 25 years of experience. I know they plan on briefly addressing this body and sharing their perspective as well. I'm grateful to Ed and the city administration for their support and I'm curious how the rest of council feels. I, however, could not be more excited or proud to be voting yes.
Is there a motion up the table?
Yes.
We'd like to hear from a few maybe. You don't reference that.
Well, you can have discussion.
Shan, Julie.
Would you want to come up and speak?
Hi, council. I'm Shan Vicious. I'm a founding member of Decriminalize Hazel Park. And I'm just here asking you to consider passing the resolution today. I spoke to you guys on my story previously. In 2017, I was diagnosed with major depression and postpartum depression after my first trial. I had treatment-resistant depression, Zenith, Celesta, Wellbutrin. Those traditional medicines didn't work for me. I started a microdosing schedule using psilocybin containing mushrooms. My entire life is changed. I would not be standing here in front of you without my microdosing schedule and psilocybin mushrooms. John Hopkins did a study this past 2020 November and they gave two doses of psilocybin mushrooms to 24 participants. Seventy-one percent of those participants reported that their depression symptoms had subsided over 50%. I know because I'm one of those people. I'm a business owner. I'm a mother. I'm a wife. Truly believe this medicine has medicinal value and it works for me. Thank you for listening to me say.
Thank you. You too.
Hello, I'm Julie Baron. I'm a advocate. I am the co-director of Decriminalizing Nature Michigan and love effort in Ann Arbor and helped in Detroit as well, decriminalizing entheogenic substances. These substances offer a very rare ray of hope for people in some very serious conditions, treatment-resistant depression, PTSD, anxiety, addiction. These are people who've really been through the western medicine world and have had little, no relief or hope even. And these substances can really offer a huge profound shift. There are also people using them spiritually, community ceremony, and they come out of their, these are substances that drive them. So our goal is to reconnect to nature. If you're part of this ecosystem of nature. And so I encourage you all to vote yes today on this resolution. And I really am very thankful, Luke, and I'm thankful to all of you for taking the time and hearing from us and voting on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no one.
Would you want to?
Sorry.
My name is Dr. Ryan Burd. I'm a doctor of psychiatric medicine, family medicine, prevention and medical medicine. And I tend to bring a farm, although I consider Hazel Park part of my local community. I don't have a lot of the risks and benefits of ethno-genetic plants. So these compounds in these plants are essentially neurotransmitters. That's why they work with our natural neurotransmitter system. Specifically, some of these substances, fentanyl, thiamine, naps, all have similar actions. They all bind to serotonin, two-way receptors. This is considered part of this, like, classic pathway. And they work by controlling our default load network, which is overactive in a lot of these psychiatric conditions and thereby offering some opportunity for growth in here. And we've seen pretty profound experiences with people, some of the most profound experiences in their life. And they are being researched, as has already been said, at many universities, over 300 universities are studying these, from the top institutions around the world, John Hopkins, NYU, U of M, Yale, Emory, NRCA California, College of London, and so on. And they're being researched to treat many of these psychiatric conditions that we don't have to treat. PTSD, depression, and so on. These are historically hard to treat. And these substances are showing actually much better results than our current medicine. So I think it's a fascinating time for mental health and it makes sense to decriminalize the physical people who are using them in a ceremonial fashion for their own well-being, especially if used in a supervised and ceremonial manner. So on to safety there. These are all extremely safe compounds. There have been zero reported deaths from the ingestion of five-enthenium kerosene and non-hackable. No overdoses essentially impossible. There's no organ damage, no neurotoxicity. They're not addictive. In fact, they're actually anti-addictive. They develop a certain tolerance, so you can't. Then there are some, you know, temporary increases in blood pressure and heart rate that occur with these substances. So it's important that people should be screened appropriately for cardiovascular issues before ingestion. Specifically, it's an ibogaine, works incredibly well for people who are addicted. Specifically to opiates. I mean, there's reports of single use of ibogaine during a person's addiction. But still, people with, like, severe medical problems, cardiovascular illness should probably stay away from that. And then, of course, the experience with themselves, although often very enjoyable and pleasurable and actually transformative, and also be difficult, I mean, looking for fear, anxiety, other intense notions. But these are typically dose-dependent and evolve after this substance withdrawal. And then they can often be mitigated by having somebody there, interpersonal support, guidance. And yeah, so it's putting somebody there to make sure no one does something that is harmful. And then people should also probably be screened for severe psychiatric, you know, psychosis, bipolar, et cetera. Those can be exacerbated. But in general, these substances are incredibly safe and helpful from a medical standpoint. And then with proper screening and supervised setting are, are, are very good. Thank you for your honesty. And I'll see you later.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the administration has no objection to this resolution. It's putting something, you know, on paper to what is already a practice.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any questions? Any more discussion? Please, item two, event licensing. I'll open up the public discussion for event licensing.
Yes, there was one person, Melissa, speaking on the event license. Counselor, we're going to let the public speak first.
Hi, council.
Can you name the address for the record?
Oh, sorry. What was the ball? It's me, very good evening. I heard in my office. I heard about this event last month. Actually, the first interaction I had was when I went to the reserve day for the park, specifically Green Acres for that date, and I was told that it was completely booked. So I went to my back of the date, which I'm going to stay with regardless, so full disclosure. This is how I found out about it, but I will be keeping my back seat. It actually worked out better ended up home share with the next one. So I'm just going to read what I wrote. So I know that city council and city admin have done it all, always will do their big diligence for the housekeeper. My name is Terrence Parkin, and thank you, which I spoke with three of our recreation department directors this morning, and she did a lead, like, experiment for fire marshal occupancy, occupancy and medical, with, you know, alcohol, so I'm really happy to hear those things. I love music festivals, so I appreciate that. It was fun to come to this next date. But I am concerned about parking. I know that the recreation department has rented out their facilities, one of those days at least, and that they will need that parking for that event, for residents. And so here we go.
I don't think there are any, there should be no dates that were rented at all for that festival. The facility should not be rented. That was what was called for Serena, so.
Specifically, a resident did tell me that they rented out for one of my dates and they were concerned about parking.
That resident may be mistaken about that date, because I think she was in my office today.
Okay. Good thing. All right. Okay, thank you. Our parks, especially Green Acres, are for residents, used and not intended for layout for 4,000-plus concert venue for private companies, which may wait for master plans to be strapped for by parks and recreational facilities that are, quote, accessible to all residents. In that example, the art fair always opens towards the square. Memorial Day carnival always opens towards the square. And, and, always opens towards the square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Anybody else from the public want to speak on this issue? If not, we'll have the applicants for the event license come up.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm John Levine with Cannabis Council. And this is my partner, Julia Gilbert. The attorneys at Cannabis Council are the co-owners of MCA that has the event license. We've made a lot of progress on the parking issue. We've been talking about, we have another short presentation, everybody, that I was going to hear. Then we had a good meeting with fire lease, councilman.
And this map that we're passing around, that's, well, I'm so pleased on that meeting and our department has incorporated their concern. We would like to, you know, there was an issue, or to sort of, that it's quite safe, they are all fire retardant and quite safe material. They're, you, for.
Regarding this to the parking, some of the council members, especially we approached Pastor Barry at Ann Arbor, he has agreed to let us use the parking lot. There's Pastor Scott from Salvation, across the street, just off the road. He's agreeable to it as well. He wants to form a support in their first meeting, two weeks. And then I think Jeff said that the schools would be available. They're done. What happened?
So the first one is just, what is the event, one of the fundamentals that you guys already know what we're doing here, trying to do here. It's a two-day music festival planned between 18th and 19th at Green Acres Park. We have major national acts and incredible local talent aligning and performing. We're also putting together our competition for the dispensaries and the brands that they carry to kind of have a little contest to see if they win and get some, you know, bragging rights, a little bit of a boost for their marketing. These are the acts that we have secured at this time of the show. So these will be all performing throughout the event. We also have opipias kind of spinning if it's being dissatisfied. The grounds are set within 4.68 acres of the fencing that, at the, at the Green Acres location. This one's more, you guys at this point, you've got the 830x60 consumption pass, where people will be actually doing the consuming, which are air-conditioned filters, where we won't be pumping smoke into the neighborhood. We've got, those have a capacity of 300 people at 6 feet apart, you know, COVID restrictions. 400 is probably a form of what we're going to have in there. The crowd area is 1.14 acres, that's under 50,000 square feet, and at 10, one person per 10 square feet, that's 4,600 people standing in the identified crowd area. The map on the next floor. So the crowd area is over here on the right, because I'm trying to determine the size of those people. You can also see that on your printout. Now, I know, as I talked about, a cap of 4,000 people apart at one given time, if we are willing to accept, though we would prefer to have a larger number. We can still work with that. The green tents are the consumption tents, as are the red ones, we need to stay right there. So that consumption area will all be covered with the one main area. And Tom over at Facilities has some concerns about having crowds on the green for the baseball net there. So we changed the shape of the event in order to block that off from public access. So that will be a backstage area. Parking was a major concern that we brought up here, as well as with the park pass. So that's how it's just touched down there. We've already got several, you know, facilities there, so how it could take it to that point, there's still a couple more.
Oh, just, no, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Both churches are agreeable. And then I think Jeff said that the schools would be agreeable as well.
Yeah.
The fire safety, we spoke with Action Fire there in Hazel Park. He's willing to provide any equipment that we can acquire. Fire safety, tents, fire hydrants, I'm sorry, fire extinguishers. We suggested two for exit.
And you can reach them. Okay. So and then we're also directly, per instructions from Action Capital, we're directly approaching the tenants' and where our big property for additional off-site parking. And had a great conversation with Jonathan up here from the center about parking lots that they have access to in areas that people use for showrooms.
Okay. Go ahead.
You have a question?
Nope. I'll let you finish your brief presentation.
This is the lot that we've identified already. The yellow ones were done, we just got confirmation from the schools today at the beginning of this meeting, so we weren't certain if we would have access to all of those lots. We are planning to use the baseball line with outside of the fencing as accessible parking. So for folks who have any staff or needs, they're right there on site. We still need to speak with the folks over at First Methodist. For now, there we go, sorry. For now, three methods, so about their lot there. Next one, crowd control. We're going to be bringing additional security on Sunday night, as a concern brought up, considering who we have performing. So we want to make sure that we've got enough staff on hand to handle anything. We also will be getting an evacuation plan for the event approved by your fire department before the day of the event, so we can make sure that there's a plan for the eventuality. We've already identified a couple of emergency exits, but that's where we're going to situate it, because you see on the map, it's running through there, there's a small purple area just adjacent to the park of the community center for EMF, which purely quotes from some number of EMF providers that I've got. So evacuation plan also going to include show stops and stopping, so we can avoid issues that have come up in other events over the last year. So we'll have members of the stage crew and security staff that are identifying and empowered to stop the show at any time, so that safety measures.
That is the final slide.
Thank you very much. That is our.
I've got a couple of questions. First, how are we, my big concern is people parking in adjacent streets. You know, we can say that we have parking at all of these different locations, but, I mean, I'm the type of guy that's going to drive around and try to find something nearby. How do you guys plan on addressing that?
So signage that we plan to put around the areas, that added management has talked about blocking off certain streets before the, for a male, for that host to get in from that side. We're also going to have capable staff blocking the area and people pointing anybody to see parking where they shouldn't, that was obviously, if you're not heard of, this is their friend, this isn't parking in your car. There will be, we're trying to, like, tow, someone who will, like, tow, you know, controls basically, so that we can identify cars that, hey, park at the spot where you're not supposed to, you didn't listen to the people who put the car here, you're for the signs.
I think that there's a concern on Sunday night, it going late. Would you guys be amenable to it ending at like 9:00 PM instead of 10:45?
Our headline act is one, they have lights in their shop. So can we look at what kind of sun goes down and maybe make that call, the kind of call based on that?
It's probably the longest day, weekend of the year that you're right in the middle of the solstice right there. So again, I think councilman makes a valid point. When I make a statement, first of all, you know, you guys have been very good to work with, you've been very professional, and I appreciate that. This is an event, though, that is unlike any other events that we've ever had here in the city of Hazel Park. The ordinance gives me the authority to approve or deny these types of events. This, the scope of this event is such that I'm not going to make that decision on my own decision that needs to be made by the elected representatives of the city of Hazel Park. I think that they've done a lot, they've done basically everything that we've asked of them. And I think, you know, Luke is making a reasonable request. We are concerned. It's going to come down to, it's going to come down to parking and logistics. Okay? Can we park these cars? Can we safely move these people from the adjacent parking lots to the event? Can we move these people safely from those parking lots back to their cars? We don't want to have an issue or a problem here. I have a background in law enforcement and I have an extensive background in special event security. And with that, and, you know, I have a couple of horror stories that I've participated in in the past, and I want to make sure that if council says yes to this, and it is up to them, that we do absolutely everything possible to make sure that there's not going to be a problem. And where we can, again, problems are logistics for parking, crowds that become disappointed and become unruly, too much noise, the weather could be very hot, so we need to make sure we got sufficient hydration and things like that. Those are all things here. Again, this is, this is something new. So if council has anything that I haven't thought of, let them know. And again, I've been very honest with all of you, and I've told you that I will pull the plug and cancel this event in the morning of if I think there's any threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the city of Hazel Park. So I've been very clear with that. I'm clear on the record right now. You guys know that that is a possibility in a given time. So still, I have concerns. You've been great about trying to allay every one of those concerns, but we're still in uncharted territory. So I'll ask the council if they have any further questions if they have.
I definitely have some additional questions. I, so I definitely have a concern. I, so I definitely have a concern about parking, which, um, I appreciate the extended away areas of parking. But my concern is people get bored waiting for or get, they're, they're done. They don't want to wait anymore for a shuttle, right? It happens all the time, especially when there are four thousand people leaving or coming to an event at the same time. My concern then is that traffic, that foot traffic through our neighborhoods to get back to their vehicles, um, the potential disruption that could cause to our communities of four thousand people walking through our city at eleven PM, um, even on a weekend, that is an astronomical amount of foot traffic and could make people feel uncomfortable, but it also could be very disruptive because I'm assuming these people are going to be coming off of, as I have attended many concerts in my time, when you're leaving, you're not just back to down, you're still, you know, amped up, you're excited. Also, what are we doing to prevent, um, smoking and driving? What is the, I mean, that's still illegal. You cannot, you cannot, you know, go to a cannabis event where you're expected to ingest cannabis and then just send these people out into the world to get in their vehicles and drive. How do we mitigate that? I, I'm concerned with only seeing four security points here.
There's also now got, there's always security teams that have taken a, so there will be low security back area that was keeping a lot of, uh, that.
Okay. Do we have a number of shuttles that you guys are expecting to rent or pay for or own?
Well, it depends on how many of the cell of patients we have. At this time, our plan is to have the parking out there so and as we settle.
So then everybody else that's expected to park?
At one of the vulnerable lots that we identified at this point.
Yeah, would be walking to the event.
Yeah. We want to prompt the, 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 the whole part of the area, but prompt appropriate access there.
Uh, I, I know that you guys are at four thousand six hundred and we're at four thousand. So I was wondering if we could just split the middle and say four thousand two hundred.
I got a question. You get authorization from the city of Ferndale for any noise complaints or any traffic flow through their neighborhood? Have you talked to them?
We have talked to them about the event, discussed, uh, we discussed them talking about using the, uh, the parking at Martin Park Road. Yeah, for additional parking. They have some concerns with, uh, weather and, uh, having the brownie wet there. So that's add to the treat in the back area. So, uh, we know we're planning an event. We have not specifically addressed those issues with them.
Totally. Type of event?
Yeah, we, we actually reached out to them, the initial planning stages of the event, potentially hosted with them in their city, uh, but they did not have an option to have their event at that same time and it was a party. So we came, uh, excited to inform them.
What other question? If we have to push up extra patrols and we're going to pay overtime, are you paying the overtime?
Yeah, you've already discussed that with, uh.
And you're going to put a bond up to secure that overtime?
Um, you can absolutely do that.
That would be exactly what I would like to see them go through and have a formal bond, securing our overtime for patrols. Cause we just can't call them up. We have to schedule.
I want to, I want to be very clear to like, the fundamental idea of this event is I'm not like morally opposed to it. I am a cannabis advocate. I, I, I fullheartedly support cannabis and the extension and the decriminalization and legalization and the de-stigmatization of it, um, because I think it helps a ton of people. And, um, my biggest concern is the, as another, as a person who also plans an event, a large event in our city, the disruption to our neighborhood. I don't, um, I just am concerned that this event, which you repeatedly said you want to host each year, which you would then, there would be an expectation of growth, there isn't any place for this to grow into. There literally isn't, and that is a concern to me. Like I'm worried that we're going to have this event, it's going to cause a bunch of disruption and then you'll need it to grow and we won't be able to host that again. So we will have put all of this weight and all of this discomfort in our community without a long-term benefit to our community or, or even a consistent event that could come back because there's no room for it to grow into. That's a big concern on my part.
So in terms of growth, yeah, we would, we absolutely love it well. We were, uh, you know, I, and obviously we had a sense of opinion about how many people could fit into the festival area to be nearby. But parking is a huge issue. We're hoping that as we look to grow, we're going to have better relationships with the local, like Action Capital that has significant state, uh, with these visitors that we're talking about, talking through approach for additional parking so we can, if we can and, and utilize lots and our sponsors in the area as well to have additional capacity. We're hoping that the benefit of this event is so clear, like we have all these people coming to town and spending money, uh, learning about Hazel Park, everything that has to offer, the potential residents we have from burning the thousand cities that come to this event. Uh, you know, we hope that the benefits are clear and we're trying very, very hard to make the event that's beneficial to everybody and everyone involved. And that includes you guys, including you, you know? Like you said, we want to be in like way back. We want to make sure that it's a thoughtful and respectful event and we don't piss off the neighbors. And that, uh, you know, people are excited about us coming back.
That's actually one of my questions. Um, have you guys gone around to any of the homes that are immediately in that area to let them know what you're planning?
No, I, I can't think of who has this guy.
Because of my guess is that none of them know or very few. So I mean, I would be concerned about, I mean, because I, again, like, like Alyssa, I'm not against the event. Like I think it, you know, or cannabis, um, big supporter. I'm just concerned about the disruption to the people that live right by that park. That's what concerns me. Like, like I almost feel like something should be taken door to door just to let them know. But that's just my thought.
With some of the venues that you have scheduled, there are crowds, patrons to those events have a history of not being nice.
Neighbor.
Neighbor. And that concerns me as well.
Again, like I said, these folks have been very professional and, and very accommodating. Everything we've asked them to do, they want. Yep. It's, and, and that's to your credit, but.
But that doesn't negate the potential for the disruption overall.
And they have to, they're going to have to live with the consequences of the decision they make. So that's why we're all so concerned about this. It's not, we like you guys.
Events and how you, how they go off or anything about, it really, if you are in your business.
Yeah. If you came to us with an event and you said, we wanted to do a thousand people, I think we'd say, sure.
Check.
You know, uh, two thousand people, we would say, sure.
Yeah.
Four thousand is really pushing the maximum capacity of this park. Well, no, it's a ticketed event.
It's a ticketed event.
No one can come, there's no walk in.
Let's not pretend that people don't sneak into Pine Knob, that people don't sneak into, uh, I mean, I've been, I've been to Lollapalooza. It's a ticketed event, people still sneak in. Like that's not, this is not, it's impossible to make it completely secure. But that is, I'm not worried about an extra fifty people sneaking in. I'm worried about four thousand people traipsing through neighborhoods at eleven thirty at night.
We don't have to actually walk through whatever, through the parking facility that provides all, you know, or the, that's really walkway and service drive.
And I, I do agree with the person's, uh, opinion about ending at nine o'clock on Sunday. We have working families here, they got to get out of their workout monkey point. If you want to change that venue to Saturday and stay open later on Saturday, it would probably be better, better than doing that.
Well, you've already got contracts with events that form starting at nine fifteen. Can that be changed? Can we back that up and maybe end it, cut the difference and end at nine thirty?
On both days, uh, Liam Marley and the uprising have their contract, uh, stipulations on lights, uh, while it's, uh, part of their.
As well as what?
Woodhouse.
Uh, members of London.
Oh, wood, I thought that was part of London. Just videos inside a tent, right?
Well, that's all, they've got the stage, the stage.
Or the audience.
The chairs, the cloud, the smoking will be in the tent, but, uh, the entertainment, uh, you know, live act.
We were told that a hard stop would be got at ten forty five.
That was admittedly based on competition fit, uh, to the system and based on what Memorial Day festival. The difference there between Memorial Day festival and Memorial Day festival.
To not have a concert.
Right. It, it, it's got a gear tent, a band, but that is in a tent and that is, that is surrounded.
And they're local, you know, they're like local.
They don't have a lot of volume. And that's another thing, I was coming to the deathful level of, uh, the speaker system because that's pretty much confined to the tent. Now, I have no doubt that the surrounding area can hear that, but it's not like extraordinary. So.
Even the art, even the art fair has, we have a stage, but it is like the municipal city stage. So it's, you know, it's a rolling trailer, um, with limited decibels and we have to adjust if a neighbor calls and says, hey, it's too loud. And we've also cut our hours back because it was disruptive. But now also that I'm hearing there's lights with these, and I'm concerned about the light.
Well, the lights are in the stage, pointing out on the stage itself and that will give audio, uh, some from the back team that the people around.
Okay.
Are directed at the stage.
Yeah.
It would even be the intensity of the puzzle softball.
They, they do have it directed, uh, as best they can direct it out towards, uh, the home plate and towards the hill and the expressway. So, uh, again, you know, while they probably have a talk about decibels, I think you, you've done well with parking and you went and you secured the parking we asked you to secure. I think we still need something with, uh, Ashley, although I don't know how successful shuttle service is going to be, I'm just going to tell you that, it's my own personal thought. I'm grateful that some of the other, you know, players in the city have, uh, you know, have volunteered some, uh, some space. It's just, this is just a tight venue for this.
So a couple of more things on my end. Uh, would it be possible to reach out to, uh, Ray Flott and Ghostface Killer and see if they're willing to go a little bit earlier on Sunday to accommodate, uh, an earlier stop? At least check in, do I have to present it at a some meeting? Uh, and then would you guys be amenable to doing, uh, some sort of mailer flyer door to door for the people that are immediately in that area, immediately affected? Because I, I don't want it to be a, a surprise to them. And I plan on sharing on social and we can certainly do our part, but just ask for a certain misery in that respect.
That includes Ferndale.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
So that's, right off of, uh.
Woodward, Woodward hikes.
Yeah.
All grown.
The neighborhood.
Yeah. Right. Within like a.
A circumference of where the music would be played toward.
Yeah.
And understand, you know, I'm going to have you, and I may call you and maybe bring in the decibels.
Have you talked to our police chief about coordinating?
Yes, he's been here. They, we, we've had to meet with our city staff. Again, city staff, they're going to do what they're told. If you guys, uh, you know, okay, this, they will do the best that they can privately. They all have individual concerns about this, the same concerns that we've all voiced here tonight. There is an unknown. There is an unknown as to whether or not we can accommodate that many people. There is an unknown as to, you know, what are the safety concerns? We've never had a, a concert, uh, like this of this size and scope. The parking is somewhat dispersed. This is an unknown. There is risk. I'm not opposed to taking risks. I just want to make sure if we're going to take a risk, that we have, uh, really examined every possible contingency where things could go, uh, south and make sure that we try to address those issues.
Well, I'd like to keep running on this rabbit hole.
May I ask what the numbers represent?
Oh, they're just a number of each group so we can identify as we move forward, that this could have, uh, as another group. Um, they were required by the MRA for our application, um, the number of other things.
Cause I was like, is that, what is this?
Do you have a pleasant noise ordinance in place?
Yeah.
Um, it is in.
Does that have a decibel level on it?
We, we do not.
It's not a, it's not a specialized time, um, but it is a nuisance ordinance. So it's, uh, it's pretty adaptable. So if we don't like what's going on, we can adapt to that and we can make that stop.
We use the common law definition of disturbing the business. So, uh, again, we understand there's going to be some noise that's outside of the ordinary. I don't know what that level of noise is. I mean, I don't know, you know, maybe we need to do a mic check. Maybe we need to do a demonstration. I don't know. I know, I think council wants more information. On the other hand, we have to give these guys, you know, we need to give them a decision. It's either a go or a not go because they've got substantial, uh, investment in this already. So, you know, they, they want to make it a go. It's not you guys.
Everybody's having a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, what, uh, any concerns when talking on their salt? It's like they, uh, made this with a, with a motion or with a decision.
I move that we continue discussing and negotiating, uh, with these individuals for this particular customer.
Support.
I'm like, I'll let Andy have that one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think, yeah, you know, it's going to be a decision that you're going to have to make at the next meeting and it's going to have to be thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yeah.
Uh, we can't delay it any longer. They've got, we can't string them along. They need to know whether or not this is going to be a go. They need to know what your drop dead positions are going to be, uh, on some of these things. I think we're down to, how many people, okay?
How are they getting back and forth?
How are they getting back and forth to parking? What's going to be the security structure there? And then I think, uh, how late they're going to go and how, how many decibels is the mic going to put out?
Is it, is it something we can approve conditionally?
Because if you approve it conditionally, I'm going to end it up, you know, pulling the plug on something in the middle of it and it's going to be a problem. You shut down one of the events and process, there's an issue. Okay. These things, they have a life of their own. As I, you all heard my stories before, uh, from when I was involved in law enforcement with, uh, specific special events that all of a sudden became somewhat problematic out of the previous guy or became problematic and obviously so it never should have been held there. So I've seen things go both ways. So it's very important for us, it's going to be a thumbs up or a thumbs down of the parameters that you guys, uh, impose and it's going to be that way. If it's not that way, we will shut it down. If it is that way, we will see what happens.
Hey, we have a motion on table support to push this to the next meeting. And the suspension to it.
Please, guys.
Again, I will say for the record, they've tried to meet every expectation.
It opens up, uh, item three for the camera system.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the city of Hazel Park is requesting the purchase of, uh, several flock cameras. I have here, uh, in the audience, uh, Chief Hookhold and, uh, City Attorney Amanda Mason, who had point on this. They are here to answer any questions that you have. Uh, the city of Hazel Park respectfully requests the approval of the purchase of these cameras. Uh, for the record, I want to say these cameras are license plate reader cameras only. There is nobody in the city of Hazel Park's administration, police department or prosecutor's office, uh, that wants to have any kind of a ubiquitous surveillance state. This is not Communist China. We are not, uh, you know, implementing social credit, uh, and, uh, using a camera system to, uh, enforce that. This is specifically, uh, something that is a license plate reader and we have a great many, uh, protections in place to prevent the misuse of data. And, uh, I'm confident that, uh, we have a good system here that will help make the city of Hazel Park safer.
All right. Thank you for sharing up.
Thank you.
Comments, please?
Um, I have questions about, um, cause I know, uh, some residents in our community will likely have questions about this as well. Um, where are the proposed placement of these, um, license plate?
We're not going to comment on the proposed placement of the cameras because that is a, a, a law enforcement matter. We're not going to be.
Moreover, would they be placed on main streets or would they be placed in neighborhoods? Is what I'm looking for.
They'll be in view of the back of the vehicle in the lane of travel only. They'll be in view of the back of the vehicle in a lane of travel only. And they're very specific on the back end of the vehicle. It doesn't gather a lot of, um, people outside of the license plate or the back of the vehicle. It does not show faces, people like that.
Does this, um, do we plan on moving these around the city?
They, they make some that you can move, um, they're a little more, like five hundred dollars more. I wanted to check out the permanent ones first and then go from there.
Okay. Um, I, I spoke with some other people in other communities that have these in place, um, to good effect. Uh, I do have a concern with the interlocal agreement with Warren. Um, I'm not really comfortable with this um, because of the placement, but also what I was understanding is that it specifically is supposed to be, um, seeking license plate reading at a, um, at a housing complex, which I'm not comfortable with permitting. Um, do we have a, do we have written into our kind of plan, um, of policing where we will or will not face these? Like, I'm not comfortable with these being placed facing specific housing complexes or neighborhoods.
No, there will be roadways that are traveled by the public.
The general public.
So I can tell you if they're not intended to be on any residential street either.
It's more for main thoroughfares.
Yep.
And, uh, the, the one in Warren is further down from the complex. So that is simply, that one, obviously, since it's in the uh, agreement and the interlocal agreement is subject to public, that's gonna be, uh, on, uh, quinter towards Eight Mile. Right.
Yeah. That one's strictly trying to get cell phone traffic.
Right. That's not specifically targeted to that housing complex. That housing complex, I believe, have their own cameras that.
Which I have no problem with. If you, yeah, there's a, I, I read a, a whole thing about a housing complex, a condo complex, um, that their HOA purchased these for, um, use within their own, uh, enclosed gated community. Um, if that's what, if they wanna do that. Right. Yeah.
And again, we're the governmental entity. Obviously, we are, uh, bound by all constitutional protections and we have to obey the law, uh, with these. And, uh, you know, that is not, again, that, I think there was some confusion, uh, with that because of that housing complex, but it's much further south of the housing complex.
Um, is any of this information FOIA-able by the general public?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
So if somebody were to come in and say they wanted a FOIA or a specific license plate, would they be able to seek that?
I don't even know that we're gonna have that info. Basically, granted, yes.
I'm asking questions that people have asked me because I don't know the answers. So that's why I'm asking you.
Right.
Also, as a victim of stalking previously.
Right.
Um, I wanna know who has access to, you know?
That's a good point. And I'll throw this out there, uh, and Amanda or Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong. But we don't have to create data for a FOIA request.
Okay.
And we, we, we do not maintain data. And that's a good question that you've asked. Uh, because we don't have to create data. So if someone FOI us, we have no, we, we don't even look at the system unless we're looking for something specific in relationship to.
If there was, yeah, if there was part.
It would be during.
Yeah, if it's during an investigation, then.
It can't be FOIA. Okay. Good. Thank you. Right.
Um, I just wanted to ask you because I'm talking about the surveillance from the files that I saw. And when you know, it's just so clear, which actually was captured in a series of film pictures. So it's not even, and I couldn't properly tell if I'm pretty all.
Can you use the microphone?
But it, it's a series of some pictures and photographs. So it's not, um, a camera that's connected to the wall. It's just, it's capturing the angle of the light. So it's not being, it's not anything like that. So it's not even what it's.
And could you describe, like, what are the primary uses of this type of camera system? Please?
Um, basically, what inputs we can put into it is going to be stolen cars, wanted persons, people in warrants, missing persons, domestic violence, uh, protective orders, or terrorist, terrorist-related activity. Obviously.
Human trafficking.
Yeah. Uh, crimes that happen after the fact. Um, we can create our own things that we're looking forward to put out. So we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll look out.
Sure.
And.
Okay.
We've had some incidents of crimes that have happened that I believe would have helped us tremendously and very quickly.
Yeah.
Also, much like lean, there's, they can only use it for purposes of law enforcement. Very specific how they can use it. They have to type in when they're accessed in the system. Specific law enforcement purpose that they're using that for, the user ID, and that's tracked and logged, exactly like our lead.
That was gonna be my next question.
And so, yeah, and so, I mean, if, if I decide that I wanna go in there and, you know, find out where some philandering husband is, sorry, honey, I know you're not. You know, I would have to type in my own credentials. I would be in trouble. I would be subject to criminal prosecution, subject to, you know, par reaction, being fired, all those things. So it's exactly like lean and all, all the protections that would happen there.
It's, it's a very good question, uh, because we wanna make sure that this is not.
This is an employee's placing.
That was, that was actually one of my concerns was, you know, okay.
And I don't want, I don't want the public misunderstanding, either the access that is or isn't available through the system. And that's the biggest point of this.
And then also there's not third-party disclosure on our internal company then, other than, like I said, and I did review chief provided to be a sample of our contract with you. So I wanted to see that in the contract from the company, other than obviously it's subject to federal court order. So we're all subject to what the court would order. And then, um, any laws of our state regarding, like, obviously state law overrides something in the contract from law. So if they have, if our state has longer retention laws, we don't, we can't say they hurt for that, then, you know, we go from there, unless it's an ongoing investigation. It's a normal version, normal, those things. So that's contract bound where we cannot disclose, they cannot disclose. And then there's also another thing in the contract that says, you know, they are court ordered to provide something or we are also, you know, you have to notify the other parties in the contract. So those protections are, well, these have been very helpful too, to, to children. Yeah. And there was a recent, excuse me. She said to me, watch the call presentation where it was Redwood. Yeah, where there, um, was like a break in and a child was raped in their home. And, um, there was like a partial description of the car. And this was one example, you know, like it's like a blue, you know, four door, whatever it is. I'm making that up. I don't recall them when I read. But they were able to go back, things you would never able very likely, if you once ever you get a leave. And they were able to go through and say, you know, this baby blue four doors to Dan with a mist area and then go through. They have that of the back and then, you know, they have the partial ID of the plate and go here and check and find out when you two and Appleton was in there. And the, the, that information that they had was for fleet, multiple examples of those types of things happening. And then just the everyday run-of-the-mill, you know, property damage and just the basic things that the residents think on the daily. Not necessarily maybe extreme cases that we have, you know? Recollections vary. You know, somebody might go, oh, our blue car, I think it was a Ford. And here was the, the license plate now. Well, it turns out it was exactly Chevy Tahoe, it was this, it was that. It's not subject to bias, interpretation. Literally specifically with that, I may, I'm not all of the car, the year. All of those things with certainty. So you don't, you're not subject to interpretation of what.
I move approval of the interlocal and Chief Buchholz request. Support.
Any more discussion? Discussion?
Do you have one more thing?
Thank you, counsel.
I just wanted to add one more thing. Say, uh, a wanted vehicle came into town and we got a, a hit in the, or whatever. If an officer comes in contact with it, there's also another verification process. We have to verify it through, verify it's still active. So we just can't run roughshod all over this with this verification going on.
Yeah, secondary stops. It's gonna be another question I asked because I know we don't currently perform those for like broken taillights or things like that. So, um, I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And like I said, we, we took this seriously. Uh, you all got my memo, uh, that Amanda and I wrote regarding the safeguards that we have in place. I thank you for this, uh, purchase. I think it will be, uh, a system that will make Hazel Park a safer place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, like we have a motion to approve the consent agenda one through four, six, seven, eight.
I move approval of the consent agenda items one through four, six, seven, and eight. Support.
A discussion, discussion on those. Passes. Ministry of Reports, License and Applications.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, Jeffrey Campbell is in the, uh, audience to discuss this. Uh, the applicant is, uh, submitted a, a license for a processing facility. Jeff, did you wanna give a background on this?
Uh, I would just say this, uh, two things. The, uh, the building's already been vetted, uh, inspected several times. Uh, and basically, uh, the only thing, um, basically all I got, I, I have to add really, uh, in no, there's no extraction. It's simply, typically a hack. Might be a little extraction, but really it's just a hack. We'll bring the number of.
Can I ask a question of you, Jeff? Um, how long has that, uh, property been uninhabited by an active business?
Save-A-Lot, um, I don't know. We, I remember discussing this very briefly, but, uh, Save-A-Lot, um, was purchased by venture capital, uh, a firm like Fame Capital. And they ended up, uh, overleveraging the entirety of the Save-A-Lot and closed like seventy, seventy, Save-A-Lot around the country, something like that, something crazy. Uh, it's been closed at least, uh, two years.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep. No, we're not putting out a driver.
Well, I know, right. And I know that we didn't, we didn't leave the, quite a few, the majority of Save-A-Lots locally closed.
We have a motion to approve this.
I move that we approve a temporary marijuana processing license for Dreamfields at seventeen twenty-seven East Eight Mile Road upon the condition that the applicant receive a full license approval from the city council and Dreamfields receiving state approval and beginning operations by May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Support.
Any more special discussion? Hearing none. Passes. Sports commission seeing none. New business seeing none. Communication from department heads seeing none. Communication with city attorney seeing none. Steve Wilson and city manager, hear the comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Michigan System of Municipal Finance remains fundamentally broken.
Thank you. Thank you, city councils. No.
Um, no, real quick, real quick. Seriously though, uh, we, we lost a great community volunteer. Uh, Mr. Bobby passed away sadly. Um, it wasn't unexpected, but it was unexpected to some of us. And, uh, I just wanna send out my condolences to his friends, his family and our community for the loss of a great volunteer. And we do have, um, some things planned here in my memorial.
Thank you, thank you, Alyssa. I'm glad you remembered that. Bobby, yeah, Bobby McDermit, longtime recreation volunteer, advocate for youth and kids. Tireless volunteer to make kids' lives more fun and safe. Uh, passed away after a very cruel, short illness. And, uh, we send our sympathies. We have a bench coming in his honor that we will invite you all to the dedication.
Thank you.
Move that we adjourn. Support.
Any discussion, more discussion? Okay, we're done. Thank you for coming.